We'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:30 PM. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Judith Boilo and Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity, understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decision made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call her own?
Alderman Willshear. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Dean.
Yes.
Alderman Cookson.
I am present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shoneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
President.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Present.
Alderman Moriarty. Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
Thirteen present.
Also present, Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton and his Honored Mayor James W. Donches. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I wanted to speak of the ordinance pertaining to the wastewater fund, which is on the agenda, oh seventeen thirty-one. We've discussed this at some length in the past, but in essence, if you look at the adopted budget for fiscal seventeen and in previous years, the wastewater fund is presented in the Green Pages as a single consolidated enterprise fund. And this is how it should be handled pursuant to the city charter and pursuant to state law. However, our ordinances don't, despite the way it's presented in the budget, our ordinances do not really treat it as a single consolidated enterprise fund because the ordinance says that half, approximately half, of the wastewater treatment fund is under the combined annual municipal budget and half is not. Handling this in this fashion is inconsistent with the charter and inconsistent with state law with respect to special revenue funds. So what this ordinance proposes is that the wastewater fund be treated as a single fund, not part of the combined annual municipal budget, but instead as a special revenue fund, one that is funded through the user fees of the sewage, the wastewater treatment payments and fees that customers pay throughout Nashua, both commercial and residential. Now, some of the, some people have pointed out that passing this ordinance would create additional space under the spending cap for the budget that we are going to be facing in fiscal eighteen, and of course, it does have that effect. But this is how special revenue funds have been handled in the past. This is not the first time that a special revenue fund would be created outside the combined annual municipal budget. For example, several years ago, we created for the benefit, for the purpose of paving streets and roads, we created a special revenue fund, that is, the mayor and the Board of Alderman, and moved some user fees from a couple of different sources into that fund. And when that was done, it created additional space under the cap, just as this one would do and this ordinance would do in this, in the case of the wastewater fund. So we are proposing that this be handled in the same way that it has in the past. In the past, when a special revenue fund was created, there was no retroactive recalculation of the cap calculation, and I know that there might, there could be those, there might be people who say that they're, that this procedure should be changed now, but I think that we should be consistent with the past. Additionally, given the budget pressures we are facing this year, we really need additional space under the cap. We have a $2 million pension increase. We have at least a, what Penichuk is telling us is a $400,000 increase in the water bill. We have an electric increase of 11%, and we have the opportunity to increase expenses for the dam at Mine Falls in a way that will increase revenues by more than the expenses that we incur. But still, if you add up those items, the $2 million, the $400,000 for Penichuk, the 11% rate increase for electricity, and the taking over the dam out in Mine Falls, even though that is a net positive for taxpayers, that is, the dam, if you include all those things, they exceed the amount that's available under the cap. So we would need, in the absence of this legislation, to make severe cuts in essential services such as police, layoffs, fire layoffs, teacher layoffs, and I think that we can work carefully to manage expenditures carefully, so that we can still have a manageable increase to the tax rate. Despite all these increases with which we are being hit, those being the pension, the electric, the water, and everything else, I think that if we pass this wastewater fund, special wastewater, special revenue fund, if we conform this with the city charter and with state law, and if we treat it as we have passed prior revenue funds, I think we can manage expenses to bring in at least higher than we'd want, but a reasonable tax rate, given all of the, all of these huge increases that we are being hit with over expenses where we have no, no control whatsoever. So I would ask the board to adopt the recommendation of the Finance Committee and pass the ordinance as proposed. Second, Mr. President, I wanted to mention the Veterans Tax Credit. The tax credit or the ordinance would authorize the city pursuant to a law which is now on the books to expand the Veterans Tax Credit to include all veterans. Right now, it's only veterans that are, that serve during a period of conflict as defined by state law. This is a, this is a step I believe we should take, but we, but if passed tonight, it has a couple of effects which I don't think, which I think we should attempt to mitigate. First of all, as the bill at the legislature is written now, it does not authorize the city to phase in this Veterans Tax Credit, and it would take immediate effect, and in addition to all the other impacts on the tax rate that I just talked about in context of the wastewater fund, we would also be raising taxes by an additional, the assessor thinks $670,000 or close, getting up towards another half a percent for this, for this particular item. Now, the State Senate, because we aren't the only ones to notice the sort of severe impact that this could have in the short term, the State Senate has passed a bill, I think without opposition, that would enable the, any community to phase in a Veterans Tax Credit over a period of several years. This was not even a bill we proposed, or we didn't, you know, this was promoted apparently by other communities. And again, it passed the Senate, I think on a voice vote. If passed by the House, which I think it will be because it passed the Senate so easily, it would enable us and other communities to phase in the expanded Veterans Tax Credit over a period of several years. And if we want to take advantage of that phase in, we need to wait for the, for the state bill to pass, the House, and be signed by the governor, so we could adopt that procedure. So I would ask, I ask that you table this, wait for this, wait for the state law to pass, and then enact this with an amendment calling for a phased-in approach. Next, Mr. President, I wanted to mention something else, which I don't think the board is probably aware of yet, and that is a petition that has been filed in the probate court to move funds, the endowment for the former Arts and Science Center, take those funds, move them out of Nashua, and give them to the courier. Now, this is $950,000 of endowment that it was intended to benefit the Nashua Arts Center, which is the fire station. And the, when the, when the Arts and Science Center was created, the Articles of Agreement provided that the mission of the Nashua, of the, of the center and of the organization, and I think of the bequests that funded it, and the bequest was by Edith Carter, "The purpose was to provide classes, exhibits, and performances in the arts and sciences, enrich the lives of the community through the arts and sciences, and provide opportunities and facilities for arts, cultural, civic, and community groups." Well, right now, at that same center, we are, through a number of organizations, are fulfilling that mission. We have the Peacock Players there, who are providing classes and performances in the arts for, in that case, children. We have the actor singers who also perform there. We have the Nashua Theater Guild, which performs there. The Symphony has its offices there. So the center, as it currently exists, at least in my opinion, fulfills the mission and the purpose of the bequest. So I've asked the city legal department to look into this, to take a position on this petition before the probate court, to ask that the funds remain in Nashua, and if we need to create some new organization, then we should do that. But this bequest was made to benefit Nashua, to benefit the arts and the community here, and I don't think should be moved, and therefore, we, we hope to take a position in the, in this litigation and see if we can retain the funds here in, in our community. Finally, Mr. President, I wanted to mention that there are several items that are coming up this coming weekend that members might want to consider. First of all, there's a pancake breakfast, all on Saturday morning, at 10 o'clock, for the benefit of the Corpus Christi Food Bank. That's going to take place, I believe, at 589 West Hollis Street. There is the Greek Independence Day Celebration. I believe that's at 11 o'clock out in front of City Hall. And there is the Awareness is Healing Walk to End Heroin Walk, which will originate at Greeley Park at noon. Last year, there were close to 1,000 people participating in that walk. Darlene Pina is the organizer, or the principal organizer, and I think it'll be another big event. And it's designed to raise awareness regarding heroin addiction and create the hope for people who are in the grips of addiction that they can join others who have found their way out of an addiction. And if any members of the board, you know, wish to participate in that, you would, of course, be extremely welcome. And that's all I, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Shoneman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak about oh seventeen thirty-one, the wastewater fund ordinance, and just respond to some of the mayor's comments. First off, I certainly would agree that this, that a big push for this, I think, would seem to be the need for room under the cap for more spending. I understand that we're facing challenging times. I don't think that's escaped anyone's attention, and this would provide that. The only problem that I have with it is that it provides it with a simple majority vote of eight. There's a process regarding the spending cap that has certainly worked well in the past. I understand the spending cap has been overridden a couple of times in the past, maybe more than a couple of times. That extra spending rightly has, according to charter, a higher threshold. I think that's a process that we need to, to follow. That prevents us from, from circumventing the appropriate discussions, and sometimes the appropriate discussion, when it comes time to budget, is about priorities. The same dollar cannot be spent twice, and so we think about, if we're going to spend it here, we can't spend it there. And I think that's a conversation that members of the public deserve a chance to weigh in on, and that we need to have frankly and openly. Secondly, what was said during the budget meeting, I think rightly pointed out, is that we're not in the budget cycle yet. We're coming to it, but we're not there yet. We're not talking about cuts to departments. We're talking about a process. So I think that to say severe cuts are ahead is, is not 100% true. We don't know that yet. What's ahead is a process where we're going to look at things if we follow that process, and it's important to do that. I think that's what the taxpayers expect, certainly of me, that's what I promised. Not that I would never override the cap, but that I would never override it unless there was an actual need for it, that I would follow the process. I think we need to do that. We'll talk about it a lot more later, but I did want to address any notion that this automatically means a severe cut. It does not, and I also want to point out that there's a process for overriding the cap. Thank you.
Alderman Moriarty.
Sure. Regarding oh, ordinance seventeen thirty-one, I echo the comments by Alderman Shoneman. Later, I'll explain very clearly how the city charter and the code of the city of Nashua makes it very clear that this wastewater fund is actually different, and it's very clear how you cannot, by pulling the wastewater out of the general fund does not allow, does not free up any extra dollars. It's actually very simple. There's three paragraphs, three sentences, and I'll go through that later. But my question for you is, why don't you just simply request that we exceed the spending cap?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Well, first of-
I'd rather not get into a debate at this point. These are responses to the remarks.
Do it during the debate period. It won't be the first time that somebody has asked the mayor a question.
You can ask the mayor a question during the debate on the ordinance. Alderman LeBrun, are you done, Alderman Moriarty?
I just repeat that during prior remarks to the, response to the remarks of the mayor, Alderman have asked the mayor questions in the past.
And you'll have the opportunity to do that when we debate the bill. Mr. President? Alderman Dean?
I move to allow Alderman Moriarty's question to be asked and answered by the mayor.
You all heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And ask for division. Those in favor? Seven to seven, the motion fails.
I missed the opposed.
Go ahead, Alderman Moriarty.
The question stands. Because the current way that this is being handled does not conform with the city charter or the state law, or state law. The wastewater fund is a single consolidated enterprise, and yet, pursuant to an ordinance passed, which everyone actually who testified about this in the committee, including the original sponsors, agreed is irrational. The ordinance that we're dealing with is irrational because it says part of the wastewater fund is under, is within the municipal budget and part is not, even though it is supposedly a single consolidated fund. So the, in order to make this conform with the charter and with state law, the proposal here is to make it a true enterprise fund, separate it from the combined annual, or move half of it in, out of the combined annual municipal budget, where the other half already resides, and treat it as it should be treated under the charter and under state law. And I haven't proposed the budget yet, and we just started working on it. But given the exercise that we did in Jan, in December, when we said what would happen with a flat budget for these departments, which is the result under the cap, with $2 million pension increase, with a $400,000, there's only $3 million under the cap. So there's $2 million of pension, there's $400,000 from Penichuk, there's an 11% electric rate across the entire city, and if we want to take over the dam and actually make money, that will increase expenses, and those increases will exceed the cap. Those four things alone will exceed the cap. So if you play the tune that sort of complying, you know, not doing anything won't result in very severe cuts, I think that's not the way it'll play out. And in the middle of a heroin crisis, I don't think we should lay off 20 cops. And I think we should have full-day kindergarten. And in, and in the midst of a situation where the fire department has taken on the safe stations program and is saving dozens of lives right here in our community, I don't think we should close a fire station. So if you think this out to the end, to the end game, to the end of the road, and if we can deliver a tax rate that is at least reasonable, under all of this pressure and all of these demands, I think this is the reasonable step to take.
Thank you, Mr. President. In lieu of all the question and answer we just went through, it covered most of what I had to say, but I do believe that this is something that we should wait until we get further into the budget process before we go any further.
Thank you. A question through you to the mayor, please. Thank you. I just want to confirm, Mr. Mayor, you said you haven't started working on the budget yet, is that correct? It's not in a state that is ready to be presented?
No, I said I haven't proposed it, but I have started working on it.
All right, thank you. So the numbers with regard to the 20 police officers and the one fire station that you just mentioned, is that, are those actual numbers?
Those are, those are, when we, when we did the exercise in December or November, whenever it was, and we asked departments as to how they would handle a flat budget, those are the kind of answers we got. Now, as I pointed out, that with these four items, $2 million for the pension, $400,000 for Penichuk, an 11% electric rate, and if we want to actually make money for the city by, by taking over the dam, those expenses already exceed the cap. So in order to get the budget under the cap with those four items, we would need to do more severe than a flat budget. We'd actually need to cut the budgets, at least to a, to a some degree. And so, so listening to what the department said at the exercise, those are the types of reductions they were talking about, and that's where I get that, that's, that's the, what I'm articulating is the result of that analysis.
Are those worst-case scenarios, in your opinion?
Uh, yes.
And are there other, are there other departments beyond public safety where savings could be recognized, where it wouldn't necessarily affect either police or fire that drastically?
Um, well, it would be, you know, it's hard to find millions of dollars in other departments because schools, police, and fire are, you know, the vast majority of the budget. One irony is that, this is a detail we haven't really gotten into, but again, we've got this situation where the wastewater fund is half under the cap and half isn't. If the entire wastewater fund was under the cap, at least this year, the wastewater fund is going to go down a million dollars. But the part that goes down is outside the cap. So, I mean, a million dollars wouldn't solve the problem, but it would, it's sort of interesting that there is that irony there. And I forget exactly what questions I'm, what question I'm answering at this point, but I think I answered it.
I will save the rest of the questions for discussion later.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Any further responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
There are none.
Minutes of the previous meeting and public hearings, Alderman O'Brien. Do you have a motion?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion, Mr. President, that all minutes of the Board of Alderman's meeting of February 14, 2017, February 21, 2017, and February 28, 2017, and the public hearings conducted by the Budget Review Committee on February 27, 2017, and the Planning and Economic Development Committee on March 7, 2017, be accepted, placed on file, and the readings suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of February 14, 2017, February 21, 2017, and February 2017, and the public hearings conducted by the Budget Review Committee on February 27, 2017, and those of the Planning and Economic Development Committee on March 7, 2017, be accepted, placed on file, and that the readings be suspended. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Communications, Alderman Moriarty?
I move that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that communications be read by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Thomas J. Leonard, Chairman, Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors, relative to special meeting of the sole shareholder, March 24, 2017. Penichuk Special Water Committee recommends election of James M. Murphy.
Alderman Moriarty.
I move to elect James Murphy to the Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors for a term to expire December 31, 2017, and until his successor is elected and qualified, and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sole shareholder to the Board of Directors of Penichuk Corporation.
Motion is to elect James M. Murphy to the Penichuk Corporation Board of Directors for a term to expire December 31, 2017, and until his successor is elected and qualified, and authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the shareholder to the Board of Directors of Penichuk Corporation. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we will transmit the proxy card.
Communication from Len Fornier, Superintendent of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries, relative to requests for joint convention with the Woodlawn Cemetery Board of Trustees.
Before I recognize Alderman McGinnis for a motion, I want to make the board aware of a situation that I don't think has ever occurred before. Our next meeting is scheduled for a week from tonight, and we have absolutely no new or old business for that meeting, nor do we anticipate getting any by the end of the week. So we can either schedule a joint convention and all come here next Tuesday just for that purpose, or we can schedule the joint convention at the April 11 meeting and take next Tuesday night off. Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would suggest that we wait a little bit to see how things play out, to see if, in fact, we might have something that we need to address, although- although I'm sure my colleagues and I don't necessarily want to come for no reason next Tuesday, but we don't know what's going to come about with things that are before us this evening.
We are past the deadline for new legislation, and there is nothing this week that will produce an action that would put something on the board. So, I guess my recommendation would be that we schedule the joint convention for April 11. And then, if there is no business for next week, that meeting will get canceled at the end of the week instead of scheduled. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yep, fine.
Do you need a motion?
Alderman McGinnis, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to accept and place on file, and that the Board of Aldermen meet and joint convention with the Woodlawn Cemetery Board of Trustees on Tuesday, April 11, 2017, at 7:30 in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and that the Board of Aldermen meet and joint convention with the Woodlawn Cemetery Board of Trustees on Tuesday, April 11, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchus, relative to veterans' tax credit state legislation and proposed resolution 0-17-035.
Alderman Cookson?
Mr. President, I would move to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept and place on file. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donchus, relative to not, not, yeah, notification of extension of the contract for portable toilet rental service.
Alderman Siegel?
Mr. President, it is my great privilege to, to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award the three-year contract to United Site Services for an annual sum of $17,225.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and award the three-year contract to United Site Services for an annual sum of $17,225. Is there any discussion? Thankfully, no. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I believe we have four speakers signed up. Tracy Pappas?
Tracy Pappas, 12 Sward Terrace, Nashua. I'm here in regards to 017-031. I'm here tonight as a Board of Public Works Commissioner speaking for myself in opposition of this ordinance. This ordinance takes the wastewater portion of the budget out of the operating budget, which is subject to the cap. The legislation is switching money around by taking certain fees out of, out of the cap. As a commissioner, I feel that this will permanently damage the wastewater budget and the wastewater facilities itself. The reason I believe that this cannot be properly executed or honestly executed is that there are shared employees working for city departments, which are subject to the cap, as well as will be taken out from the cap if this ordinance passes. I am going to refer to my budget, and I'm going to go through the shared employees. City engineer, construction, inspection, engineering, engineering assistant, deputy treasurer tax collector, deputy manager of engineering, director of public works, DPW billing accountant, DPW collection specialist III, DPW contract administrator, executive assistants, finance and admin admin, manager, fleet manager of the street department, public works administrator, senior manager of accounting and engineering, senior staff engineering, which last year came in at .55, scheduled in 2018, is 1.10. And then, staff engineer, which last year came in at .50, this year comes in at 1.10. My concern is that these numbers could easily be manipulated in order to try to come in under the cap. We've seen very high increases in the wastewater. The last year it was 15%. Do we want to see 25? Do we want to see 100? Do we want to see 200% increases? And we've got some real problems with the facilities over there. I actually don't think that it's really an intellectually honest way to deal with our budget crisis. And, to point out, as, as a citizen, I do have children in the school system. So, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to cut, I'm not trying to cut city services, certainly. But, as, as a person who has been on the Board of Public Works, I've seen real concerns with the wastewater department. I think that we've had some real problems, and I'm really afraid of what this will do to that, to that department. Also, in addition to the, this was, this was our draft budget. Since that budget last month, three positions have been ordered, three wastewater assistant positions have been added to the budget. Obviously, we haven't approved the budget. You guys haven't started approving the budget. So, I fully understand the pinch that, that we're in as far as the city goes. But I think subsidizing the city budget with the way, with the user fee fund is really not fair. Again, I'm very concerned over the amount of increases we will see. And I did take notes of the mayor's comments that we have had user fee funds that, that, that we do have outside the budget. To my knowledge, none of these shared city employees, like the wastewater does. And the other thing is that really stuck in my craw, during a hiring freeze, we approved a public relations person for, for the division. And actually, 20% of that person's salary is going to come from wastewater. What's going to happen next year? Is it going to be 50% of that person's salary that comes from that? As far as the veterans' tax credit, I understand it costs the city money. But, if I were a veteran sitting here, I'd say, well, why don't I matter? If certain items really need to be added to the budget, and, and, and we've added a public relations person to, to the Division of Public Works, why aren't you considering my tax, my tax credit? And I understand why not. I, I, I understand we're in a very tight budget situation. I have a feeling that this is something that we're going to look back at and say that we were being penny wise and pound foolish. I think it might get us out of a sticky situation this year, maybe next year. What are we going to do the years after that? As I said, I, I really am very concerned that it's going to do permanent damage to that department and to that facility, wastewater. Thank you.
Fred Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. My name is Fred Tebow. I reside at 24 Cheyenne Drive. I'd first like to congratulate the city on achieving the AAA bond rating with Standards and Poor, which now means you get both Fitch and Standard and Poor giving you AAA. That's outstanding. And I should note that the ratings agencies consistently mention in their rating documents that Nashua's spending cap contributes to Nashua's high bond ratings by imposing a discipline on spending. For if spending is controlled, the need for taxes and debt are reduced, and reserves build up. And to quote on this point from the ratings report from SMP, and this is a direct quote, and it appears in Nomzo reports, "From a spending perspective, we believe that the city has traditionally been disciplined as it strongly adheres to a Budget Control Charter Amendment passed by voters limiting year-over-year budget increases." That's a direct quote from the ratings report. Now, concerning 0731, which I'm here to speak about, sewer fund by any name continues to operate the same as a current wastewater fund, which is supported by user fees and debt repaid with user fees. But the real purpose of 0731 is not to change the name. The real purpose of 1731 is to exempt, limit on spending without requiring 10 votes. Let me review and remind you of the structure of the spending cap. The spending cap, as described in paragraph 56(c) of the Nashua Charter, is a limit on spending. It is not a limit on taxes, and it is not a limit on tax rates. It's a limit on spending, very clear in the charter. The charter does not differentiate between taxes and fees. The Nashua Charter describes that all budget proposals for the annual budget prepared by city departments and adopted, considered by the Board of Aldermen, and adopted by the Board of Aldermen, come under the cap. Mandated spending come under the cap predates priorities over discretionary spending. Budget proposals not prepared by city departments for the annual budget fall outside the cap, such as grants and trusts and county taxes. Those are not prepared by departments. When comparing two annual budgets for purpose of calculating the cap, both budgets must contain the same accounts and the same funds. You cannot compare one budget with one set of accounts and another budget with a different set of accounts. Charter is not allowed. There are no, I emphasize, no exceptions stated in paragraph 56(c). None. There is an exception to the cap. Clearly stated in paragraph 56(c), and that is 10 votes. Used to be two-thirds votes in that with another charter amendment, probably for citizens through referendum. It's now 10 votes. That's how you override the cap or get an exemption. And if there's budget crisis, I always hear, there's always a budget crisis. I've been tracking this for 23 years. There's always a budget crisis. But if there's truly a budget crisis, they take 10 votes. Not impossible to get. It's happened about three or four times in the past. But only 10 votes can exempt the cap. Now, there's a city ordinance, 5145. That's quoted in page 2 of this ordinance, 01731. That was drafted originally, and I helped draft it. And I worked with city accounting, Cindy Bolowski, at that time, Rosa Evans' predecessor. And that was with account numbers clearly identified and consistent with the charter. It's in the cap, it's not in the cap. But somewhere along the line, the account numbers were removed, creating great distortion, exactly what now is on the cap. Because all you have is language, no identification by account numbers. I'm not going to go into details about the account numbers, but clearly, there's now confusion. There's been other changes made causing further distortion. 01731 represents a further distortion and deviation from the charter, and that must stop. Section, in page 2, section 2, which is page 2 of the ordinance, it's exempt the entire sewer fund from the cap, simply violates the charter. On the question of why is part of it in and part of it out? Is that irrational? I said during the phone call hearing that I agree with the mayor, that's irrational. When the question is, should it be in the cap? All in the cap or all not under the cap? There's only one answer. It has to all be under the cap. There's nothing in the charter that allows you to take it outside the cap. And the ordinance, as the mayor herself pointed out last year, he tried to get mandates exempted. An ordinance cannot supersede the charter. I strongly recommend, and when this vote comes up, that you vote to amend and strike all of section 2. I have no problem with section 1. You strike all of section 2. This deals exclusively with this question about the spending cap. And the analysis deals almost exclusively with the exception of the spending cap. I have no problem with the sewer fund, wastewater fund, whether you call it a special revenue fund or not, doesn't matter. But that's not the real purpose for this ordinance. If this amendment is exempt all of, take all of section 2 out, if it fails, you will have created a $9.1 million gap. Because you will compare the 2017 budget, the 2018 budget, in fact, we have created a $9.1 million gap, which you can spend, and that's what the mayor's intent is, and he explained it, and he really talked about it, without needing 10 votes to exempt. What's the point? Get the vote. If you look at the budget, and there's really a crisis in this budget, and it's different from any other budget in recent memory on the mayor's log zone, and you really have to exempt it, take the 10 votes. Make an exemption. Millions, it's only a lot more than 9.1 million if you want, if you really wanted to. In the circumstance that you choose, amendment fails to strike amendment number 2, I recommend you further amend or substitute amend. And I think that motion is, that recommendation, I think is brought before you by Alderman Shoneman. He'll address it, I presume. And that is that you compare apples and apples. So, if you have a budget in 2017 and take out all the sewer fund, compare it with a budget in 2018 without all the sewer fund. At least you have apples to apples. This itself is consistent with the charter. I further recommend that you ask for a roll call vote on either of these two amendments. So, we can clearly see who is with or without the true intent of the spending cap in the charter. And I should caution that 01731 passes as introduced without any amendment, the way it's written, and passed the Budget Committee, that if as a consequence, legal action is brought, the proposition that the charter's been violated, and if that legal action prevails, all exemptions will be removed. All of 5145 will be removed. They'll have no exemptions. all exemptions will be removed, all of 5145 will be removed, you'll have no exemptions. And then, you have a smaller, you have another serious, serious problem. Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Dooford, 52 Conner Road, Nashua. It's hard to follow former Alderman T. Boone on the same issue, but nevertheless, I'm here to speak against O-17031. I'm disappointed that the mayor and some Aldermen have devised a scheme to redefine the general fund with the intention, with the intended result of artificially lowering next year's budget, giving you the ability, as the mayor explained tonight, to spend more money. As a taxpayer, we vote to send responsible people to City Hall to make tough decisions, and these are tough times, I'll grant you that. By passing this scheme, you are skirting your responsibility. This is simply a magic show, meant to represent, misrepresent reality. An earlier speaker called it intellectually dishonest, and it could be. I read former Aldermen's, I read, excuse me, I read Alderman Moriarty's article in Telegraph, which likened this proposed scheme to people on a diet that go in to get weight every week, and then one week, for one reason or another, they want a different result, so they take off their shoes. That results in short-term gratification without any long-term success. That will be the result to the taxpayer if this legislation is enacted. And what seems to be lost in all this, and I don't, no one's really brought it up, the mayor referred to it a little bit earlier in his conversation, is the tax rate. In my business, I'm very tuned in to local tax rates. Nashua is now over $25,000. Look at the communities around us. I read that you, and I heard the mayor tonight, refer to the forecasted tax rates as manageable or reasonable. What is it going to be this year, 2675,000, next year 2835, this is go over 30,000, $30, 000? I think you've lost focus on that. You're going to turn people away from this city. Yes, we have a lot to offer, but at these tax rates, look around. It's obvious that there are ways to overcome your problems, and that's by following the cap and overriding it if it needs to be over it. That's why we sent you here, to make those tough decisions. This legislation is disappointing and an abandonment of what taxpayers expect from you. I urge you to reject this scheme, and I thank everyone who does not support it. Thank you.
Robert Sullivan.
Whoops, I didn't know I was that strong. Hello, Robert Sullivan, 12 Stony Brook Road. I'm going to talk about the wastewater fund legislation. So here's why I'm against this legislation. One of the main reasons for the legislation, as stated, that the wastewater fund cannot be commingled with city tax revenues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. These funds are not being commingled. The legislation, if approved and implemented, will create a $9.1 million spending cap space or gap. It was reported as $5 million in the Telegraph, but based on the budget hearing and two citizens' analysis, we indicated to the Budget Committee that it was 9.1 million and not 5 million. And that is the amount that, with the next oncoming budget season, that the Aldermen can increase the budget by over and above the spending cap of approximately 1.33%. The Board of Aldermen, if they needed to, needed money above and beyond what the spending cap allows for the upcoming budget year, could vote to override the spending cap and add more if they wanted to. The ability to do that exists each and every year. As reported in the Telegraph, if this legislation is not enacted, then drastic budget cuts would occur to our services. And I want to, after I finish my notes here, I want to address some of the things that Mayor Doncha stated during his comments. Drastic budget cuts, this is due mainly to the rising city pension costs of $2 million this year. These $2 million is less than 1% of the total, city's total budget. So the city politicians cannot find less than 1% to cut from the budget so that critical services cannot be cut. At the Budget Public Hearing, it was discussed that the necessary changes to the budget can be made without creating a 9.1 million dollar gap or shell game. This was discussed at the Budget Public Hearing by Alderman Shoneman. This should be further evaluated before you proceed with any other steps. The cost of this, when I read the legislation, and I've been noticing this with other pieces of legislation over the past three years, when at the fiscal notes, there's never anything mentioned. So I want to talk to the property tax owners, what this is going to cost, give them a range. Someone should be doing this. The cost of this legislation to the taxpayers is somewhere between 2 million and 9.1 million. This equates to approximately 70 to 280 dollars increase to your tax bill, above and beyond the normal increases that will take place in the next fiscal year. So for your information, your tax bills, and this is my estimate, and I think I'm within the pretty range, will increase between 250 and 460 dollars, assuming that you have a present-day property tax bill of 6,000 dollars. Now, Mayor Doncha, I want to address a couple things that you stated during your discussion point. Reasonable tax rate, we used to hear this, we hear that each and every year. What does that mean, reasonable tax rate? Manage expenditures reasonably. Well, you know, the Board of Aldermen over the past several years, for the last five or six, have been approving contracts, cost of living raises, that are well beyond the rate of inflation, anywhere between 3, 3.5%. And this went on year after year. And each and every year, Mayor Lozo would say to the Board of Aldermen, this pension thing is growing and growing, it's going to, you're going to have to address it. And each year, the Aldermen would say, we've got to draw the line in the sand. We cannot keep giving out these increases. And then the next year would come, and another one approved, well above and beyond the rate of inflation. We need to draw the line in the sand. We need to cut back, but oh, the previous, another contract approved a year ago, we gave this, so we have to do this another year, the same thing. So if the Board of Aldermen demonstrated, that they took the initiative to cut costs on the major cost drivers that are, that are hurting the city, and I'm not saying eliminate raises, but for crying out loud, the cost of living raise at 3% when the rate of inflation is 1.75. So a lot of this, the Board of Aldermen had been kicking the can down the road for several years now. And, by the way, even if you did cut the budget in previous years, you'd still have the same issue today. But at least the people who are watching this would say, yeah, maybe they have put forth a good effort. Let's, they should override the spending cap. And some of the Aldermen who tend not to override the spending cap say, yeah, you know, we did the best we could. We really cut this thing as far as, there's no more. But you can't say that. Now, Mayor, you had mentioned that there were going to be police, fire, and teachers laid off. And then you mentioned that 20 police would get laid off. So I did a calculation, 20 police at $120,000 loaded rate is 2.4 million. And then you said you're going to, you mentioned fire and teachers. I really don't think you've done your numbers, because if you're going to lay off 20 policemen, there's the extra 2.4 million that you need. And then you mentioned, well, that's what they told me. I really believe that you need to do your numbers. And before you say anything, especially with the press here, that anyone who says we're going to lay off X amount of people, make sure they know what they're talking about, and they have their numbers down pat, because I don't think you're going to need to lay off 20 teacher, 20 policemen. They call this the politics affair. I never thought I'd see it in these chambers.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees? If there are no objections, the report of the Budget Review Committee of February 27, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Finance Committee of February 15, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Infrastructure Committee of March 8, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Human Affairs Committee of March 2, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Human Affairs Committee of March 2, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Penachuck Water Special Committee of March 1, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no reports, if there are no objections, the report of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee of March 6, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee of March 7, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Cultural Connections Committee.
Alderman Lopez?
I would like to make a motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Mohammed Mustakarif, 12 East Pearl Street, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Mohammed Mustakarif, 12 Pearl Street, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2020. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Mustak Mohammed Arif is appointed to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2020. Is Mr. Arif here? Please come forward.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Committee according to the best of your abilities, agreedly to the charter and regulations of the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the state to help you God.
Alderman Dean?
Thank you. I move to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Doria Brown, 34 Selu Drive, Nashua, to the Environment and Energy Committee for a term to expire 28 February 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Doria Brown, 34 Selu Drive, Nashua, to the Environment and Energy Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2020. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Doria Brown is appointed to the Environment and Energy Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2020. Is Ms. Brown here? Please come forward.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Environment and Energy Committee according to the best of your abilities, agreedly to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the state to help you God.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I would move to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Stephen Lionel, 19 Cabot Drive, Nashua, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a term to expire September 11, 2019.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Stephen Lionel, 19 Cabot Drive, Nashua, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a term to expire September 11, 2019. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Stephen Lionel is appointed to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a term to expire September 11, 2019. Please come forward.
Mr. Anthony, you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment according to the best of your abilities, agreedly to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the state to help you God.
Confirmation of appointments by the President of the Board of Aldermen?
Auditorium Commission.
Alderman Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to confirm by voice vote the appointment of John C. Franzini, 13 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2017.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of John C. Franzini, 13 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2017. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and John Franzini is appointed to the Auditorium Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2017, and he is unable to attend this evening. He's sworn in at a later date.
Hunt Legacy Trustee.
Alderman LeBrun?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Mary Green, 38 Concord Street, Nashua, to the Hunt Legacy Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2018.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Mary Green, 38 Concord Street, Nashua, to the Hunt Legacy Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2018. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Mary Green is appointed to the Hunt Legacy Board of Trustees for a term to expire December 31, 2018. And Ms. Green is also unable to attend and will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading, Resolution 17-086, authorizing release of a certain sewer easement reserved on former Hilton Avenue off Dane Street.
Alderman Moriarty?
I move for final passage of R. 17086.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17086. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1786 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-090, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility Incorporated to borrow funds from the New Hampshire Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund.
Alderman Moriarty?
I move for final passage of R. 1790.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1790. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1790 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of Ordinance 16-020 amended, clarifying and updating the elderly housing supplement use regulations and related provisions.
Alderman Melissa Goya?
Yes, I move to amend O-16020 in its entirety by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy provided with the agenda. And in terms of changes, the first change in the title, referring to housing for older persons and not elderly housing, the categories and definitions have all been removed. And if you go to section B2, you will And if you go to Section B. 2, you will see that there is a list of facilities and services that may be included but are not limited to, and that's been added.
Motion is to amend O. 1620 in its entirety by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy provided with the agenda. Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Alderwoman Malizagoya?
Yes, I would move to recommend final passage of O. 16020 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1620 as amended. Discussion? Alderman Dean?
I won't be supporting this piece of legislation. This is a perfect example of, you know, the premise behind the beginning of it, cases before the planning board. It's just amendments or not, I can't support that kind of activity, and I won't. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've tried to kind of follow what's been going on. This thing's been ping-ponging around for quite some time, and normally I'm pretty good about following what's going on. And I don't know who the right person to ask is, so perhaps through you, Mr. President, I can ask the mayor, since he's the prime sponsor of this legislation. I'd like to understand what motivated this and how we arrived where we're at today, because I guess I don't understand what's going on with this or what motivated it in particular. There wasn't anything associated with the legislation that drove me to feel one way or the other about it. So I just, where did it come from and why?
Mayor Donfuss?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, many amendments have been made by the committee, and I think they did a good lot of job of looking at the issue, I think, negotiating, talking with Mr. Brad Westgate, who is the lawyer for many of the elderly, so-called elderly housing developments, and have come out with a compromise that everybody can live with. What motivated me was just the fact that this type of development can result in a serious increase in density. And oftentimes, that makes sense where it's proposed. For example, up off, you know, Hayden Green, where there's not a lot of neighborhoods surrounding it. But in certain locations, and a very significant increase in density over what otherwise would be allowed, can have a very negative impact on a neighborhood. For example, at 122 Manchester Street, where the planning board had previously rejected four or five units in a small, single-family lot as being too dense. Then they come forward with something under the elderly housing objection, under elderly housing ordinance, making it 18 units, where five or six, whatever the number was before, was too dense, now it's 18. And I just thought that we needed to take a look at those issues and try to balance our desire to provide, you know, housing options for people that are over 55 with the need to preserve neighborhoods. I would also, I mean, I also had in mind that although it's kind of said that this provides a more reasonable, a lower-priced unit for people over 55, it really doesn't. I mean, if you look at Hayden Green, those units, they're nice, but they're the same as, or maybe more expensive than, other condominium units around the city. So again, just to try to take a look at these issues, come up with something that worked better for neighborhoods as well as for the proponents of the increased density. And I think the committee worked on it a long time and came up with a reasonable compromise.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, through you, Mr. President, if I could query the mayor on this, since I'm not familiar with all the events associated, you pointed out the example of, say, 122 Manchester, which I can infer was a motivator for this perhaps. So may I ask you, Mr. Mayor, was the revised plan, which was rejected by the planning board under the proposal to have elderly housing, was that plan approved under the ordinances as they existed at the time? So is a developer given the opportunity to do that with a change of plan?
You want me to answer? Yes, the 122 Manchester Street was examined, and it went to the ZBA for various technical reasons. It was examined under the current ordinance and was not affected in the end by the proposed changes. So they were applying the law as it exists today, not as is proposed in this new ordinance. And I think that was your question, right?
I'm also, I'd like to ask Attorney Bolton to comment on it, because my recollection after the amendments is there was no change in the density that's allowed in any of the zones. Is that correct?
I think there may have been, but not so it would affect 122 Manchester Street. 122 Manchester Street will only be affected by this new ordinance if that developer chooses to have this ordinance applied to it, and maybe he or they would. But if they want to present their plan under the ordinance that exists as we speak, they have a right to do that. They had started their process before this got introduced. I think it's more correct to say that that illustrated some of the potential problems that the original proposal was designed to clarify. Whether the amended version makes things better or worse is, depends on your point of view, I suppose.
Alderman Siegel?
Mr. President, again, I don't want to monopolize the discussion, but I will tell you the gist of what I'm concerned with. I do appreciate the idea of not having density blow up in the middle of our neighborhood. So, but what concerns me, and I'm just not clear on this, is, that's why I'm asking these questions, is whether or not a fundamental right, which was granted to a property owner to develop as they chose, would be modified or taken away after the commitment of potentially significant financial resources to realize the development based on the laws or ordinances as they existed at the time. That I couldn't support, because I don't think that would be fair. But I don't know what, again, this has had so many twists and turns, I'm not sure where we're at there, if that is happening. I would support this if we didn't take away somebody's rights.
My understanding is that the planning department determined that because of the timing of the application, that site was not held to the provisions of the new ordinance.
So it's effectively, everything's effectively grandfathered until such point as something comes before, after this is passed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Attorney Bolton?
Any application that the notice of the planning board hearing has been published for is, as you say, grandfathered. Anything the planning department doesn't know about, or the public doesn't know about because of that posting, is not grandfathered. So if someone goes out and buys three acres in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and the city is not a party to that transaction, the expectation of that purchaser may be frustrated, or may not be frustrated, by passage of some ordinance change. That one would not be grandfathered. You have to have a proposal, notice of which has been published.
I do have additional questions, but I don't think it's fair for me to monopolize the discussion.
Alderman Moriarty?
Thank you. I'm on the committee, and at least, I'm gonna vote for this, but I support Alderman Dean's decision to vote against it, and he has a good reason for it, and his reasons make sense. So one could say that it was created in order to stop a certain development, and that would be a justifiable reason to vote against it. We had technicalities of whether it actually was able to stop a development that was in progress because of what you just heard. In the end, what we have is no more restrictive than what was originally there. So in the end, there was a section which would have made things a little more restrictive that was eliminated. We did comb it through, and there were some snags and tangles that got combed out, and some redefinitions, some ambiguities. And for those of you who weren't there to see, Attorney Westgate, he did a great job of tutoring us all on land use codes. So in the end, if you vote for this, you're not making the code significantly more restrictive one way or another. So it actually doesn't matter. In a bigger picture, the, you know, the Concord, that's my opinion at least, then Concord, they passed the laws encouraging senior housing and making it easier to put higher-density units to make, take advantage of elderly housing, which, for politically correct reasons, we've changed this to housing for older persons. That by itself is a good reason to vote no, just because of the political correctness that's littered in this ordinance. But that aside, the state law that allows a developed landowners to put in high-density units in a residential area that normally wouldn't support high-density units. So I personally don't like that idea at all. I like residential neighborhoods, remain residential neighborhoods, and if you're gonna put in a house, it should look like a house in the neighborhood. But, you know, I'm not in Concord, and there's nothing I can do about it as an Alderman.
Alderman Siegel?
I'll defer to my other colleagues, because as you can imagine, I have a lot of questions.
I want to point out that there are a number of things in the ordinance that are simply technical corrections, where the old ordinance made reference to rules, state rules that no longer exist, and laws that may have been changed. And primarily, the wording that's in this one cleans that up. Alderman Dowd?
I was gonna point that out, and also that the Attorney Westgate, who represented several of the developers, they worked on compromising languages to get it as clean as possible, so that it's a win-win on the cities and the developers. They can live with the ordinance as it's before us this evening, and they have no issues. And I think the fact of working together with a corporation council, they've come up with wording that we should support.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think obviously something was changed, because we wouldn't have legislation that did nothing. And I do have respect for Attorney Westgate, having used him myself. I'm well aware of his capabilities. And I do also support the idea of limiting some density in neighborhoods. But now my concern is that the definition that a corporate council gave us was notification via the planning board process. However, you know, if somebody buys a piece of property, the first thing they're going to do, they buy it with an assumption of what is possible, develop some planning, some financing, they do something well before they get to the point where they're ready to have a notice before the planning board. Again, that represents a significant financial commitment. All I would say is, is there some delay that we could put into this to just allow for some sort of grandfathering in order to be fairness, or am I overthinking this? Again, I guess in part of me also wants to understand, if Alderman Dean has some valid objections, I, through the, you, Mr. President, I would, I'd love to hear Alderman Dean's objections, if he'd be willing to share them with us. I'm curious. I'm putting you on the spot.
Alderman Dean?
I just, excuse me, I apologize. That's okay. You play a little music over there.
Evidently it came on.
I always look at legislation to be filed to address, you know, what we might see as issues, but the whole process of what went on, and this is aimed directly at 122 Manchester Street, was just wrong. It was wrong. And I'm sure down the road, we're gonna hear more about it.
Alderman Shonell?
I was unable to attend some of the meetings where these things were discussed, and I appreciate the insights that folks are sharing tonight. I received a call from a constituent who had some concerns about this in an earlier version, and now believes that their needs are addressed by it. Nevertheless, I share Alderman Dean's deep concern for this kind of thing. We have, we talked about process before, we're gonna talk about process a lot tonight. I think that we need to be very, very careful, and not, not draft legislation that targets a particular activity or place. Now, someone could be developing land all over the city any particular time, and so whenever you do it, you know, it's gonna perhaps interrupt someone's development. I think that occurrence is a little different than a specific driver, a particular project that was a particular driver. So although the folks that I know worked on this and can live with it, and I would prefer to give it my support on that basis, I feel I can't based on the process. Thank you.
Again, I want to point out that this legislation was not applied and does not apply to the development of 122 Manchester Street.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I observed that the initial legislation was proposed months ago, so there was no quick pass going on. As a committee member, I wasn't particularly aware of any specific target at first. There was some concerns raised, and that was one of the first things that we discussed as a committee, was is this, is anybody in process right now who's gonna be held up by this? We did use that to make our, to determine our decision-making. And I know personally, my interest in this was not so much, well, protecting the residential neighborhoods and keeping the character of them, but also encouraging density in areas where density is a good thing. So I think the process did serve us, because we really did go at this. There must have been at least eight additions that were proposed, if not more. We were looking at simultaneous submissions, not only by our own corporation council, but submitted by Attorney Westgate as well, through public comment. So it was a very back-and-forth process, which can be confusing, but that was mostly because it was an open dialogue, where we were, at least as far as the legislation that's being presented here tonight, we were pretty transparent in what we were doing and what our reasoning was. And I think pretty much every line that was changed had discussion and dialogue associated with it. Particularly, I was focused on making sure that we clarified any language that was referencing state laws that were no longer in effect, because it doesn't make sense to leave legislation floating that references laws that aren't even there. So that part of this, I'm in favor of. There's one tiny application that I'm vaguely concerned of, where someone could take a larger building and decide that in very unique circumstances, they could profit by offering less units, but that was described as very rare. So it's not really an objection that I have. So I would be supporting it, just because we put a tremendous amount of work and thought into it, and I can't speak to what the intentions were when it was created, but I do know that the process ensured that it's something that is in Nashua's best interests.
Further discussion? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I was going to not support this right up until the very end, for a lot of the same reasons that were discussed here this evening. In particular, there was a paragraph, and that was Paragraph B. 3, which would have, in the original version and in the versions prior to this amendment, would have restricted these kind of developments to non-residential areas, which I thought would have been overly So it was until that was removed, or we went back to the original language that was in the ordinance, which this language has, was the reason why I'm going to now support it, because essentially, it's no more restrictive or less restrictive than it was before. However, as Alderman Lopez mentioned, it does update the language and get the, and get the language and things in line with the current state law. and things in line with the current state law. So for that reason, I will support it.
Further discussion? Alderman Cookson?
So I want to go back just a little bit as well, and understand how this came to us. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I threw you to Attorney Bolton, my understanding is that Attorney Westgate forwarded to Corporation Counsel some suggested verbiage or language with regard to this legislation.
There was a lot of discussion between myself and Attorney Westgate, and, but I think he brought his suggestions to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, and I would say that would be more accurate than to say he brought them to me.
That's right, I didn't hear. For that last?
I think it would be more accurate to say that Attorney Westgate brought his suggestions to the Planning and Economic Development Committee initially. Thereafter, there may have been some discussions between he and I about making sure that the amendments that the committee intended to make were carried out correctly, and no wording got changed or missed, or et cetera.
And the way, and I know a lot of thought and effort was put into this, and a lot of discussion, and how, because I think it was Mayor Donches who indicated, maybe it was in his opening comments, that Attorney West, or I'm not sure who said it, I don't want to attribute, but what I heard was Attorney Westgate represents many of the developers for the, these developments.
He has represented some of the developers who have done this sort of project, and I think it's probably true that there are some developers out there interested in doing other similar types of projects that he either does represent or may represent in the future.
How does this legislation benefit Attorney Westgate and his clients, over and beyond what the current legislation would?
You was talking about the existing ordinance as compared to what's before us tonight? I think what's before us tonight probably makes it clear that they don't have to build one of six or seven designated types of facilities. Now, it's basically any facility that's restricted to 55 and older or 62 and older will qualify if there's a certain level of facilities and services appropriate to the needs and desires of older persons. Before, there was some ambiguity about whether the, I shouldn't say before, currently, the existing ordinance provides some ambiguity as to whether the list is supposed to be all-inclusive or merely examples of the types of developments that would qualify. So this clears up that ambiguity, and I would say it clears it up in favor of developers. I think it, the current ordinance somewhat expands where these types of developments can be located. Under every version that I know of, there was no exclusion from the existing residential zones where it's allowed. And if anyone was under some impression that it was exclusively in business or industrial zones, that was, to my knowledge, never in any version. So that slight expansion exists. Otherwise, I think it's approximately the same as it, if you pass it tonight, it's approximately the same, except as I've mentioned.
And there, so I want to stay away from 122 Manchester, but there's another development that I'm aware of, that's at the, as you take Chestnut South to its terminus. And between Chestnut and Ash, there is a, Southern New Hampshire Services has built a facility there. Under this new proposed ordinance, nothing would change. That facility would still have every right and availability to build at that location and provide the services that it provides.
Any existing facility, any facility that's already obtained its approvals?
If it were new, if it were new, and we were just, it was just going before that process upstairs in the auditorium, and it hadn't been developed yet, if Southern New Hampshire Services came in and said, "I want to build at this property between Chestnut and Ash at the, at the south end," nothing would change.
Without having studied the full plan, and that project was underway and going through planning approvals before I occupied this chair.
Understood.
I don't think this ordinance that has been proposed to you this evening would alter their approval process at all.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, motion is for final passage of 01620 as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, and 01620 is adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance 17-029 regarding side and rear setbacks for a lot with multiple principal buildings.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I so move to indefinitely postpone 01729.
Motion is for indefinite postponement of 017029. Discussion? Alderman Cookson?
I'm just curious, how does the city planning board provide a favorable recommendation, and the committee sees it in their, sees indefinite postponement as the solution to the piece of legislation?
Would someone on the committee like to address that? Alderman Clemmons?
I know I would not have supported it. I felt that it was too restrictive. And it was also pointed out by some people in the public comment that it might make for some existing lots to be non-conforming, and would present problems for future development of those lots. So in my opinion, it's too restrictive, and there was a lot of, there could have been a lot of unintended consequences. So for that reason, I won't be, I'll be supporting indefinite postponement.
Alderman Moore, is he going?
Yes. In response to Alderman Cookson, it came back from, from planning with the favorable recommendation, but based on some input we received at our next meeting during public comment and discussing it, as Alderman Clemmons said, some of the items that were brought before us were discussed and reconsidered. And it just seemed like if something was going to be done, we should probably think it through again.
You're welcome.
Alderman Moriarty?
I'm still, I voted against the indefinite postponement. I'm going to vote against indefinite postponement tonight, because I don't mind the additional restrictions. I kind of want them.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, and 01729 is indefinitely postponed.
Second reading, Ordinance 17-031, relative to the wastewater system fund as a sewer fund.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of 017031.
Motion is for final passage of 01731. Discussion? Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I distributed this evening a copy of a proposed amendment, and actually, it was distributed by email yesterday. The text of that proposed amendment is at the bottom of page two, and we'll get to that in just a moment. But I want to start with just commenting on some of the public comment we heard tonight. I think there, based on what I heard, I think there are a lot of issues with this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. And the spending cap piece that I was most concerned with is only a piece of it. I want to start with public comment, just offer my own opinions on the things that I heard, and I'll start, I'll take it in order. Public Works Commissioner Pappas spoke about shared employees. Apparently, there are a number, she had a long list of people who are shared. Some portion of their salary is in one department, another portion is in this fund that would be moved out. And those percentages vary from a quarter to full, or whatever it was. There wasn't, it wasn't just a couple of employees, it sounded like there were a lot. To me, I think that, that we can't, I don't see how we can have half an employee outside the budget and half inside. And what Mrs. Pappas pointed out, as I think a possibility for future abuse, it could happen, or for future use, would be to start moving those percentages around, in and out of the budget, to accomplish a savings in the budget, to allow more spending, and then transfer this outside. I don't know that we have a way to really account for the hours that are spent. My understanding is that there are some folks whose time is not specifically shared in the budget, but they perform duties inside. For instance, a wastewater employee might possibly drive a plow truck for the city and plow city streets. I think that that poses a problem. I don't want to see that potential abuse. Also, if we, if we were to use that in the future, to move employees out, or move whatever else out into that other department, because it's still just a department as part of Public Works, are we saving money in the budget and then forcing the sewer rate up higher and higher? It seems to me that there's that possibility, that possibility could exist. I'm very concerned about that. I think that's a problem we have to take a very close look at. Secondly, Mr. T. Boom spoke about the AAA rating, and I think it's great that we've got that AAA rating. One of the things that he said was, he quoted, he said, "Spending is disciplined, and the spending cap is strongly adhered to." Strong discipline, strongly adhered to. Those are my notes, maybe that wasn't the exact quote, but we got our AAA rating because we have a procedure in place for handling budget problems, and we follow it. That's what they're saying. Now, if we start playing with that, do we jeopardize our AAA rating? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. But if it was known that we were doing things like this...
Would someone say they've got a budget cap process, or it's not a budget cap, spending cap process that is strictly adhered to, and that our spending is disciplined? I'm not sure they would draw that conclusion. I heard from a couple of other people. Third gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, and from Mr. Sullivan, both spoke about the tax rate
and about the effect that this can have. A reasonable tax rate, I think reasonable tax rates are usually seen as reasonable by those who maybe aren't paying them, or who aren't paying the tax, who aren't paying the cost. We all pay a tax rate. But if we're going to be doing spending, and in my mind, going outside of a process that rightly, as I said before, has a higher threshold of 10 votes, and as was pointed out by the speakers, are we really ending up with a reasonable tax rate? I think the reasonable thing to do is to, is to follow the process, have faith in the process. I said before that although spending is very, very important to me, I think it's very important toward three taxpayers, there is a method, there's a process for overriding a cap. And if we say that not adopting this is tantamount to draconian cuts, I think that's, that's simply not true. Now, there are some significant issues with this. Apparently, the city could be opening itself up for a serious loss in a suit. It looks like, and as another example, in the past, we had numbered accounts for all these things that were inside and outside, and the numbers have been lost with time. We'll get to my amendment, I, you know, I want to hear what other folks have to say. This is very, very important. But in the end, we may want to consider, not making a motion at this time, we may want to consider sending this back to committee to be a little more careful about it. We spend one session on it, I think there are some very serious issues here that we need to address. Thank you.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we could have a very lengthy debate here. There was a lot of public comment, I'd love to address some of it, but I really think that Alderman Shoneman has presented a possibility of an amendment before us, and has done it in fairly time-constrained fashion. I mean, I didn't see this till yesterday. And I think that in order for us to vet that properly, I don't think this would be the correct form to do that. I strongly would suggest that we send this back to committee to have our colleagues' suggestions properly vetted in committee, not before the full board. So, and that we don't spend a lot of time here debating something only because we're, only to send it back to committee where the debate should actually happen.
Is that a motion, Alderman Siegel?
Yes, but, okay, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to committee. That's correct. That would be a motion.
Motion is to re-refer to the, where did this go? This was from Budget, the Budget Committee. Is there any discussion of that motion? Alderman Dowd?
I could be wrong, but I believe the same motion was made at the Budget Committee meeting and was rejected.
I have seen these amendments for the first time in the last day, so I don't believe we have taken them up at Budget.
It was at least a similar, if not exact wording.
Is there further discussion of the motion to re-refer?
It's procedural, I don't think we can discuss this.
Excuse me?
I believe this is a procedural motion, that's non-debatable.
No, we can debate the...
The motion to refer?
Yeah. It's open as to the wisdom of re-refering to the Budget Committee.
I just wanted to address, I'm sorry, I wasn't calling, but I just wanted to address Alderman Dowd's concerns that this was brought up before the Budget Committee. One, there was some suggestions that this might be something to consider, but this is something that's actually gone through the legal department, which the other stuff had not. And I think that's a very important distinction. So we'd be vetting something that's already gone through the process of being properly vetted legally, so we could have a discussion about the merits, rather than having to craft the legal definition.
Further discussion of the motion to re-refer? Alderman Cookson?
I was just going to lend my support and agree with Alderman Siegel. If, since we all read the minutes that we accepted and approved this evening and placed on file, each one of us would know that the motion was brought up, and what Attorney Bolton indicated was that he was going to go back and work on the language, and apparently, we just received that language yesterday. And so I wholeheartedly agree that we should send this back to committee and have that discussion where it should be.
Alderman Moriarty?
Just in case anybody who's paying attention gets the wrong idea and thinks that Alderman Shoneman was late in submitting this request for this amendment, I can vouch for him that he made the request prior, on the Monday, prior to the last meeting that was, that was canceled due to snow. So the Monday...
The minutes are from February 27.
What I'm saying is, this, this, where, this amendment, I'm going to go ahead and support the motion, but this amendment just arrived, I've known about this amendment for a long time, because I was watching the exchanges and it was part of the discussion, like three weeks.
I think the rest of us have seen the text of the motion.
You guys only got it yesterday. The fact that it took three weeks to get here is not Alderman Shoneman's fault, is what I'm trying to say.
Nobody's blaming anyone.
Okay? Okay? He made a request a long time ago to get this hap, to get this through... He made a request a long time ago to get this hap, to get this through, it just took an unusual amount of time to get through legal.
Is there any further discussion of the motion to re-refer? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and O-1731 was re-referred to the Budget Review Committee. Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I did receive this from Attorney Clark, and I want to thank the legal department for the work that they did. I really appreciate it, and I think that having a formal process to work through is good, and whatever the timing was, I'm, I'm glad we'll have a chance to vet it further. Thank you very much.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now you understand why I said previously there might be something before the board next week, and the reason I said that is we have a Budget Committee meeting on Monday.
We have a budget meeting on Monday that is a hearing, and at least two members of the Budget Committee will not be here for that, so...
Okay.
I would actually prefer to hold this till the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee, or at least one of them is present. Alderman Dowd?
Chair of Budget, I will call a meeting of the Budget Committee two weeks from now.
Alderman Lopez, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to observe that the legal department was probably really busy working on the amendments to the planning of the Economic Development Committee's legislation, so, you know, our process was to send it back and forth repeatedly, so I feel like this is a discussion better had at the committee level.
Are we done now with the legislation we've already sent back to committee?
Okay, second reading ordinance 17-034, adding Badger Street to the overnight on-street parking program.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, I'd move to amend ordinance 1734 in its entirety by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy provided with the agenda.
Motion is to amend O-1734 in its entirety by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy provided with the agenda. Discussion? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. Basically, what, the original intent of the ordinance was to, to add Badger Street as a street where people could, where residents could overnight park, but after review from the Fire Department, they said that they were going to have a difficult time getting their trucks down the street if there was overnight parking. And so what this amendment does is instead of allowing the on-street parking on Badger Street, it simply allows the residents of Badger Street to purchase the on-street parking permits, and then they can park somewhere else in the neighborhood, similar to what we've done up in French Hill. And I want to thank Alderman Shoneman for suggesting this amendment, so, and that's, those are the changes.
Further discussion of the amendment? Alderman Lopez?
I just wanted to observe that part of the reasoning that the Fire Department wouldn't endorse putting it on Badger Street, because the street was only 18 feet wide, and they also pointed out that that's the same condition one street over on Pier Street. So I've started talking to the residents to see how they feel about overnight parking spaces there, and so far, nobody really uses it, but the overnight parking program in general is something where we should be looking carefully at, at each step of the way as we add it. A lot of the, the reasoning behind adding Badger Street was every street except for that one was added, and it turns out, there was a reason why that wasn't added, and maybe one street too many was added.
Alderman Moriarty?
Fireman, if the Fire Department says it's too narrow, then I'll take their word for it.
Any further discussion of the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, I would move to, I would move for final passage of ordinance 1734 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of O-1734 as amended. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second reading of ordinance 17-035, adopting the all-veterans tax credit.
Alderman Cookson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will move for final passage of ordinance 1735.
Motion is for final passage of O-1735. Discussion? Alderman Cookson?
I'll just say that it's got a lot of support, and I appreciate everybody signing up for this. I think it's a, a worthy, a worthy piece of legislation, and, and I believe that it should be passed. I know that Mayor Donches has requested that we table it this evening. I'm not going to make that motion right now, but I want to be cognizant of Mayor Donches' request, and at least allow us for discussion before we decide to table if that's what the ultimate motion is, so.
Alderman Siegel?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I'm not making the motion to table, because again, I don't want to shut down discussion either, but I absolutely support it, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Alderman Dowd?
I'll defer.
Alderman Dean?
I move to hold. That's debatable.
Motion is to hold until our next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Discussion? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. My, my question's in regards to the, the legislation at the State House. I have two questions, and I'm not sure if anybody here can answer them, but from what I understand, this is passed the Senate. So my question is, is when would it pass the House? And then when, when would it take effect if it was passed, the, the amendment that would allow us to do this in increments? That's, that's my question, for anyone who can answer it.
Attorney Bolton?
I don't know when the House is going to vote on it. I don't know anyone who does know. But as it's written currently, if it does pass the House, and if the Governor signs it, it takes effect immediately.
When, when does this legislation in its current form, what tax year does it affect first?
If it were to be passed tonight, it would affect the tax year beginning April 1st, 2017. If it's passed after April 1st, it would affect the tax year beginning April 1st, 2018. And that's in the state law, so it's nothing that can be amended at this level to change it. The other thing I think is worth pointing out is, is what you're allowed to do if the version currently in the, before the, that is currently passed the Senate and will eventually be for, be before the House allows, is for a three-year phase-in. And it doesn't tell you how to do the three-year phase-in, it doesn't necessarily have to be in equal amounts, but it does not provide for any longer term. Presumably, you could do it on a shorter term, but it basically says a three-year phase-in.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah. My other question on this is, under the way that the state law is written, would this be allowed to be retroactive? So if we were to table this, and, you know, it passes the legislature, are we able to retroactively say that veterans for this tax, this upcoming tax year would be able to take advantage of the one-third, say that we were going to give them as a tax advantage?
Attorney Bolton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at that. You could do, you could make it retroactive to that effect, because the, the applicable provision says it shall take effect within the town or city on the date set by the governing body, or in the taxed year, in the tax year beginning April 1st following its adoption, whichever shall occur first. So if you wanted to say it shall first occur for the tax year April 1st, 2017, even though you've passed it after that date, obviously, April 1st, 2017 occurs before April 1st, 2018.
Alderman Clemmons?
I, I fully support the full tax credit. There's no doubt about it. I think that, you know, this is something that the city can do as a thank you to our, our veterans for all of the service that they have given us. And I guess I'm, I'm on the fence as to whether or not it makes sense to do it in thirds, or whether or not it makes sense to do the whole thing all at once. I definitely think we should do something, you know, I think if we, I think I would recommend that if we hold this, that we think about having it be retro-effective for this year, so that the veterans this year can get something out of it. And, and that would be my only suggestion.
Alderman Dowd?
Obviously, as a veteran myself, I fully support doing, giving the benefit of the, to the other veterans. Also, as...
It already applies to American War.
Yeah, ooh. So, I'm, I'm, not done. So also, as Chair of Budget, I recognize that, that there are a whole bunch of variables coming up very soon relative to the budget, and I know that, that, you know, we would probably want to get some idea what's going on with the budget before we pass something that's going to incur additional costs, so that you can address it within the whole context of the budget season. I happen to be in Manchester today, in City Hall, on personal business, and I know that this issue is even a bigger issue for Manchester, because they have far more veterans, and they're looking, waiting for the state to make, take some action, to see if they can phase it in, because they would have the same issue we would.
Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm one of the co-sponsors here, as many of us are, and I, I fully support the veterans, and I think that the service that they provide is, is very, very valuable. By the way, as a public servant, people and folks, folks in the military, as they are, they don't get paid really very well, not like, not like folks around here might, in a, in a public service-type position. So I think that anything that we can do for them is, is good. But I do believe that we have some issues that we need to give careful consideration to, and I would be in favor of holding it until we get that House bill passed. I would also just remind folks that this is not an expense in the same way that other things are expensive, this is on the revenue side, and we'll have to look to see what, what how, what effect that will have on the revenues, and that, of course, has an effect on the tax rate. I'd be in favor of holding it until we see what happens with the House bill.
So motion, remember, the motion is to hold. Please address that in your comments. Alderman, Melissa Gullia?
Yes, I'm also a co-sponsor of this and, and fully support it, but I also feel that holding it is the appropriate thing to do at this point, till we see what goes on, and I would agree with the making it retroactive to April 1 of this year. But I also think that while we're holding it and we're waiting for something to come out of Concord, it would be useful to maybe think about what it means to phase something in, and, and maybe have the city start looking at a plan. Is it going to be phased in across two years, across three years? Is it a third, a third, a third? How are we going to determine how it's being phased in? So I would just ask that that be considered, so when we finally get something from Concord, we can quickly address it.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to bring up, holding is not a bad idea, but in my 10 years' experience as being a state representative, this was a Senate bill that has yet to see the light of day in the New Hampshire House, which is its own legal legislative authority. So what you see out of the Senate bill today may be morphed into something by the powers adjudicated by the legislature to change the bill completely. So any, you know, holding is a good idea. I would like to see it referred back to the committee, because the reason is, what we end up in the future may not be exactly what we have before us right now, from what the legis, once the legislature puts their fingerprints on it, we could be looking at something totally different, and I'm just cautionary to that position.
Alderman Dean?
I think that's a great idea, so I'll move to re-refer to personnel.
Motion is to re-refer to the Personnel Committee. Discussion? Alderman Moriarty?
If I get this right, if you are in favor of just implementing the tax credit immediately, you'll vote no. If you want, if you are in favor of taking time to consider delaying the tax credit, you'll vote yes.
Alderman Dean?
Re-referring. That's the motion on the floor.
Further discussion of the motion to re-refer? Alderman Lopez?
In the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee meeting, when we discussed this, it was pointed out in public comment that if you're, if someone says they're a veteran, you don't ask, "Did you see service?" You recognize the fact that they're a veteran, so I guess I don't fully understand how the state would be working out which third gets to go first, but with respect to the other Alderman, I'm going to vote no.
I believe the discussion is over whether we have to implement the full credit in one year, or would give each veteran perhaps a third of the credit next year, and two-thirds the year after that, and the full credit the year following that.
Okay, I misunderstood that, thanks for the correction. My objection was deciding who gets it and who doesn't, but if it's phasing in the credit and everybody's being recognized fairly, I have much less problem with that.
Any further discussion of the motion to re-refer? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and O-1735 is re-referred to the Personnel Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of Resolution 17-093, amending the purpose of the Expendable Trust Fund for the funding the Julia T. Ward Prize to a memorial mural project at the Amherst Street Elementary School.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Dowd, you want to?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of R-17093, refer it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, April 24th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Aldomatic Chamber.
Motion is to accept the first reading of R-1793, refer it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, April 24th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Aldomatic Chamber. Alderman Lopez?
I just thought about this and realized that as much as, as I'm a fan of murals, I also volunteer with a nonprofit that makes them, so can I retract my endorsement, because I just want to stay clear of that?
I don't think there's any conflict there.
Okay, I just don't want to walk into that.
Oh, a motion was to schedule a public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. New business ordinances?
None.
Period for general public comment? There are none. Remarks by members of the Board of Alderman? Alderman Lopez?
I just want to encourage everybody to come to the Awareness Walk on Saturday at noon at Greeley Park. I won't be able to attend, because I'll be on my trip to Honduras, but I am hoping to find somebody that I can Skype with, at least to see the opening remarks and procedures. I think solidarity and awareness of what's hitting our community right now is very, very valuable, because this is the point where people who are struggling with the, with addiction and recovery are, are getting the sense that, okay, everybody's backing us, everybody's support us, but are they going to keep backing us? Are they going to keep supporting us? And it's very important for people in recovery to get the sense that the community is behind them in this, so I just, I encourage everybody to attend, so that you can encourage our own community members to succeed.
Al, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. Tomorrow, I will be attending, unfortunately, the funeral for the firefighter from Watertown, who has passed away in the line of duty from a medical incident in the performance of fighting the fire. That is a home department to my father-in-law and my brother-in-law, the firefighting business does grow deep in my family, but it's always tragic when you lose somebody, and so I would like to express my condolences to the, the community and the citizens of Watertown in their loss.
Al, Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. On a lighter note, I'd just like to congratulate the City Room Cafe for being... City Room Cafe for being elected one of the top ten places to eat breakfast in New Hampshire. My secondary office, so, hooray for, hooray for City Room. Yeah, I won't be able to sit there. Save a seat for me, Terry.
Alderman Dowd?
As we get into the budget season coming up fairly soon, I've started to schedule meetings for, for budget, anticipating the budget from the mayor in late April. And I would like everyone to start thinking about the budget, and on that note, tomorrow night is the Board of Education's public hearing on their budget. So I would encourage, if anyone's thinking that there are, any place in the school budget that could, could be adjusted, even though we only have final say on the dollar amount, you could attend that public hearing tomorrow and ask the Board of Education directly about their budget.
Alderman Cookson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that on this board and in the committee meetings, we're, we're faced with several unique situations, and there was a public hearing that took place recently, which I found kind of odd as I reviewed the minutes. And during public comments, the members of the public were actually asked questions, and I don't recall that being part of the process or the procedure that, that we typically go through. We typically ask for testimony in favor and testimony in opposition. We let them speak, and then we carry on, and then we close that portion of the public hearing, and then we go on and, and we have the discussion during the, the regular committee meeting. I just found it odd, and, and I didn't know if, if, if we're sort of relaxing some of the, the protocol and the procedures that, that we typically abide by. So it was just an observation, and I just wanted to, to express that. I know that typically on any of, any public hearings that, that I would conduct, I, I don't recall conducting them in that fashion. So I was just looking for some, some guidance on, on that. I will also follow up by indicating that tomorrow evening at six o'clock at the Parish of the Resurrection, we'll be having Linton Soups, if anybody'd like to come by for soups, and then seeing Chris is having a fish fry on Friday afternoon beginning at 4:30. So you're more than welcome to join us at either one of those during this, during this holy season. Thank you.
Alderman Dean?
Thank you. I wanted to make some comments about, a public comment that was made earlier about, a few hours ago, about the wastewater treatment facility, and about the budget process. In the very recent past, the wastewater treatment facility was inspected near-perfect. Near-perfect. The facility is running now better than it ever has. I find it very disturbing to hear public comments like that, that aren't true, as far as I'm concerned. Have a lot of, I've spent countless hours down there, with the Director, myself, anti-patrician, maintenance staff, and the Finance Committee members can attest to the amount of purchasing and projects that are going on down at Wastewater. So to alarm the public that wastewater treatment plant isn't operating efficiently, or operating right, or whatever the case may be, couldn't be further from the truth. We're up to date on our WRF schedule, our Wastewater Equipment Reserve Fund schedule of replacements. The Finance Committee, again, can attest to that. And, you know, when you look at the shared employees with Wastewater, that's been going on for years. That's nothing new. It has to go through the Board of Public Works, through their budget process. The mayor chairs that board. I haven't heard a peep about that, ever, ever. It's, I, I find, I just find, I find this, I find it rather disturbing that there'd be accusations made, that, you know, there'd be sliding people in to that area because of this pending legislation. Well, there's four, there's five commissioners, the mayor and four commissioners, that look at the budget, and they see what's being presented. And, you know, I guess we can be critical of, of things, but when you look at the boards and commissions that we have in the, in this community, I was always under the impression that they would be working with their respective divisions. The Fire Department, the Fire Commission supports the Fire Department. The Police Commission supports the Police Department. Cemetery Board of Trustees, and the Board of Public Works should be supporting the Division of Public Works in their process, in the work that all the men and women in the Division of Public Works do citywide. But I just wanted to let the Board know that Wastewater's doing just fine. There's nothing wrong down there. And it, it, you know, to make accusations that, you know, there's gonna be, you know, fifty, hundred, two-hundred percent increases in the wastewater user fees is ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous for somebody to come up and say that. I just, you know, and I've been, and I've been listening to this for quite some time now. And it's just time to set the record straight. It's, you know, that, that's not the case. It's unfortunate that people come out and say things like that, but if they're gonna come out and say stuff like that, I have documentation associated with my claims. If somebody wants to come out and make those accusations, they should have document, documentation associated with their claims, and I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Committee announcements? Alderman Cookson?
Infrastructure is canceled for tomorrow evening.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, the construction joint special is Thursday night, and it's going to be at the New Searl School.
New Searl for Sunset?
I mean, Sunset Heights, sorry.
Wrong school?
Wrong school.
Alderman Lozegoya?
EDC, April 4th, Strategic Planning, April 6th.
Alderman Cookson? Can I ask what's going on with the Board of Alderman meeting scheduled for next Tuesday evening? It's canceled.
As of right now, we have no business for it, so if anything comes up between now and Friday, which I sincerely doubt, we'll have it. If it doesn't, we will announce that it is canceled.
Thank you.
Zero motion. Alderman Lopez?
Lozegoya?
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we adjourned at 9:48.